They're meeting an open session at 5:04 PM. We have a forum present with all board members in attendance. Please note that this meeting is a board meeting and being livestreamed to the public with camera. I'd like to welcome the community members in attendance. It's great to see the room filled and the hallways as well. It's nice to see public participation, no matter which side you represent. As a reminder, the governing board meetings are a business meeting of the board held in public. And although public participation is encouraged, it is not the public's meeting. I'll forego the rest of this stuff to say, let's have an orderly meeting. Let's be nice to each other. If you can't be nice, be civil. We can do this. It's just like a classroom. There are a lot of people with different, your classroom doesn't do it, okay? Everybody has a different opinion, a different viewpoint on things. We can listen to each other without exploding and getting upset. I'd like to see that tonight, and I will hold the board and the public to that level. And I'm sure you can do it. At the appropriate time on the agenda, individuals wishing to provide public comment will be called upon one at a time to do so in accordance with Board by law 9323. The board cannot, unfortunately, and will not respond to your two non-agendized items, but a staff member will reach out to you in the coming week on matters that may need to be reviewed as appropriate. The board met in closed session to discuss student discipline and the board's superintendent's evaluation. No action was taken. Pledge of allegiance, Riley Gehigan. Either one. D3 approval of agenda, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries five to zero. Special recognitions, Dr. Anders.
So we have, we have quite a few recognitions like to take care of tonight, but we're going to start actually with our student representatives. And, oh, I apologize for the recognition, I'm in the wrong spot. So we have, we have a few we'd like to recognize tonight, just call attention to them. I wonder if they're here represented to us tonight. Dorothy McElhaney Middle School, yes, come on up, Mr. Katan. Oh, yeah, I called on the spot. He did not know that. But, so I'll read this and you'll, you'll know how to just give us a quick comment on that. We want to recognize the work that's happening at Dorothy McElhaney Middle School. They're a Purple Star School Award. So just briefly again, California Department of Public Education formally recognized Dorothy McElhaney Middle School as a Purple Star School, a Purple Star designation, a recognized school that showed major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's militaries. California has approximately 10,300 schools and only 90 of them have been awarded the Purple Star designation. Marietta Valley Unified School District is the only district in Riverside County with a Purple Star School. Additionally, Dorothy McElhaney was awarded a fully funded military family counselor that's funded by the Department of Defense for the next school year. I don't know whether they're going to sit, but you got them. This means a counselor from the Department of Defense will be present on campus, able to provide resources, counseling, staff development, and interventions to support our military students and families. So thank you, Mr. Katan, if you want to share a couple of comments. Yes.
I would like to call up Danine Harrison, if I may. Danine is a former teacher at Dorothy McElhaney and former military. She's the one who really got the ball rolling on this. She started the Military Club at Dorothy McElhaney, and it's since passed, been passed on to Naomi Hoffman, who's currently our, our Military Chair. And the work that she's done for our military families, just melt, making them feel welcome at our school and what she does for the students during these, this club. She's done a lot, and I think it's Danine who really deserves this recognition. We're really excited to get this life counselor, and you're right, we don't have any empty offices, but we'll find a place because it's, it's that important. We're very honored to receive this recognition, and we look forward to moving forward.
I just want to thank you guys for your continued support and supporting our military families. We have over almost 4,000 military-connected families here in our district, and I just really appreciate your support and all of the, just energy from our military reps at all of our different sites, and thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we have another exciting opportunity to recognize a student. I hope she's here tonight. Our 48th District Congressional Art Competition. So Senator Congressman Darrell Issa recognized one of our students for their art, and there it is on display, you can see it there. This student is Haley Maronde, from Marietta Valley High School, and she attends studio art at Marietta Canyon Academy. Are you here? Come on up.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to read a little bit about this, all right? So I'm going to borrow this. So you were named the 2023 Congressional Art Competition winner by Congressman Darrell Issa's office. You're a student at the high school, but you've come over to Marietta Canyon for the art class, because it's pretty fabulous. I've been in that room. Is your teacher here?
Yeah. Come on up, Mr. Katan.
I've been in Chris's classroom, it's phenomenal. I've seen what you guys do, it's a terrific place to learn. Okay, so you've worked on this program all year long, this is very well deserved. Along with this, I do know there's, there's more to come. Your art will be on display in the Capitol Building. You'll receive two tickets to DC, so you and a family member, someone, I don't know who that's going to be, can go and attend that reception ceremony with them. So congratulations, and that'll be on display all year long, and that's the proof. Is there anything you want to share? You don't have to go and look at them. Do you want to share, like, what was your inspiration?
I don't know, it just sounded fun. But, thank you, Mr. Knapp, for everything, you've been really awesome.
Great.
And, yeah, I don't know.
Did you ever think this would happen?
Not really.
But what a great opportunity. Good, we're excited. Some of us just recently came back from DC, it's quite the town. So, okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
That, I know it's not that.
Not only is she talented, but she, she's very talented, she works really hard. She puts a lot of thought and effort into her projects, so if anybody was going to win this, I'm happy, she did a great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Napolitano, isn't this your second student to have won this? Last year, we had artwork in Ken Calvert's office, so.
That's true.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we have terrific opportunities for our students. Last recognition is Dr. Jana Preston. Where are you? I know you're in the audience, come on up, Jana. So Dr. Preston has been recognized as the Special Education Administrator of the Year by AXA Region 19, and that's the Association of California School Administrators in our part of Southern California. So she was on her last Monday, we're proud of her and all the work she's done. She's been our member of our district family for 24 years, started as a program specialist and now is the Executive Director. To know Jana is certainly a privilege, through her efforts, have gained a reputation as a school district who meets the needs of special education students with care, compassion, expertise. With her support and guidance in our district, individual schools have been recognized as special Olympic Unified Schools. We also have fully embraced the concept of inclusion at all grade levels and are becoming known in the forefront of inclusion in our community. So, and, and much broader than just here locally, so congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure, because I'm quite interested in the visual and performing arts, we'll make sure that a copy of your artwork will be reproduced and hung in the hallway out here so that people can enjoy it throughout the year. It's exciting, trip to Washington, wow. Okay. This is the sad part, we're, this is the last time we call on our student reps for their reports, and they're such interesting reports, I'd like to see it go on during the summer, but that's okay. I'm sure you have better things to do in the summer then. First, Marietta Canyon Academy, Lily Carmichael, welcome.
Hello, everyone, welcome back for the last time, or at least for the last time you'll be seeing me. Okay, so starting off with Phoenix Sore, this week we had spirit days preparing for prom, and they're all based off of our theme, which is Out of This World. We had Monday, which was Dream Big Day or PJ Day. We had Tuesday, which was Stars Aligned or Twins Day. We have two pictures from there, there's me and Ms. Gempler, and then there's a couple of our teachers in Ms. Dimitriyan's classroom. And then on Wednesday, we had Peace Out or Good Vibes Day, so that one was 70s theme, and then there's also a picture from that. Thursday, today, that was Planet Rock Day or Band T-shirt Day, and tomorrow is going to be Out of This World Star Wars Day. Academics, MCA had a large group of students participate in the, in the Marietta Valley Job Fair at the library. Students dressed professionally, distributed resumes, and interacted with possible employers. That's all the pictures that you see up there. And 36 of our students took the ASVAB Military Placement Test on April 27th. The Army provided a detailed score interpretation session today to help the students better understand their scores. We also finished our CASP testing this week. Guidance and Leadership. Academic incentives on Friday, I've talked a little bit about this before, but this is when students can participate in clubs and events if they do not have any failing grades. So Music Club is always popular, I've got three pictures from that, and we had another school-wide game of dodgeball, which was very fun on last fun Friday. Activities, MCA Prom is this Saturday, we are very excited. 75 students are planning to attend from our school and via guest passes. Seniors are also preparing for their graduation events such as Six Flags, Grad Night, our senior recognition breakfast on May 24th, our senior checkout is May 26th, our grad walk at elementary schools is May 30th, which is the same day as our graduation practice, and MCA graduation is May 31st.
All right, I hope that it, no.
There is one more, so you guys already stole most of this information from me, but that's all right. So as you said, this is our second Congressional Art Competition winner consecutively, that's amazing. I have a picture of her and her artwork up there. She is in our Studio Arts Class at MCA, and that's about all I have there. And then MCA students participated in an interactive field trip to the Ben Clark Training Facility to learn about careers in law enforcement and fire science. I've got two pictures from that right there, and that was just yesterday. That's all I have, thank you, guys, it's been amazing talking to you, and I hope you had a great time listening. Thank you to my fellow representatives as well for being here. I know my principal is here somewhere too, so thanks, Mr. Bean, for picking me.
We're going to excuse Lily, she has another event to get to tonight, so thank you for being here tonight.
Next, from Marietta Mesa High School, Riley Gehagan, Gehigan, all right. How is that? Tell me the correct pronunciation.
We've gotten it right a couple, but it's Gehigan.
Thank you. Great, welcome.
Thank you. Well, again, thank you guys so much for having me this year, it's been fun, and I'm, I'm only a sophomore, so hopefully we'll get to see each other soon. Okay, speaking of sad, we are so sad to see this school year coming to a close, but right now is all the time to get our last minute activities in. This month, Senate, which is our community-based outreach leadership class, they held a children's clothing drive with Ms. Lori in, in May, and we also had a staff cornhole tournament, because it's May is Staff Appreciation Month. Our biggest project right now is Mr. Mesa. Our senior boys are working so hard to put on a fun and scary show for us. I don't know if any of you guys have seen the ad, we, it's, yeah, it's really, it's going to be definitely a little frightening, but that's the point. For academics, we are in the midst of AP testing, actually this morning, our AP world kids took their tests this morning, and we can, you can feel the relaxation across campus. Decision Day Breakfast is next Wednesday. We are so sad to see them, to see our seniors go, but we are so happy to see and excited to see what they will become. And with that, our graduation is June 2nd, and there's a picture from last year. Our arts, Drama right now is working on their shows for next year, and they already have them out, and it's going to be very exciting and fun. Our band actually is having a concert tonight, which I'll be heading off to after I'm done. Concert Choir is performing concerts around the corner. Dance is also a very big, we try to include them as much as possible in our activities around campus. They're a very big part of our rallies, and they're going to do a good job for Mr. Mesa, so we're excited. Our athletics, we are so very proud of everyone in all of our programs. Volleyball got second in league for boys, CF Playoffs, Girls Across got their league title. They're playing a CIF championship yesterday, and they won two. Championship game for the CIF will be this Saturday. For track, Elijah Green is fifth at state, broke a school record of 110 hurdles. Chase Eisenhower PR'd in his event 100 meter at Mount SAC. Softball, third year in a row, claiming league champions, undefeated in league, and currently second in state. Their CIF semifinal game is tomorrow versus Norco, and we're very excited. Done, this is their first, they became a CIF sanctioned sport this year, so, and our girls are already doing great, they're second in league. Swim, we sent boys and girls relating to CIF. We also won three individuals to compete at state finals for their event. Our culture, so this week was, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so we did a mental health week to get kids in the mind calm and ready for finals, which will be fastly approaching. Our juniors won for our rampage. This is a picture on the bottom middle is a picture of our Senate class for their Ms. Lori's clothing exchange. Is on the left is Riley Walsh, one of our Senate members with one of the kids there. We also had a prom fashion show showcasing dresses from Windsor to get kids in the minds of prom season. And also, we had boys showing off tuxes from a vendor which they get discounts from. So, yes, and I'm so very excited to present Haven, actually. She will be your guys' next year Mesa Board Representative. Again, thank you.
Well, next here from Vista Marietta High School rep, Luke Files.
Welcome, Lou. Thank you. Okay, so there's some pictures from the past few weeks. On the left is the pair that won prom king and queen. This is a picture from our softball and our Girls Across, this picture from one of our BSU events, and then the middle right bottom was a live photography demonstration we did during our Visual Performing Arts Rally, and then on the right is our art presentation. Okay, for academics, we've been holding our AP tests, and our students have been working hard to finish strong. Our CTE Engineering Program took a field trip to the Air and Space Museum, and our marine biology classes visited the Birch Aquarium. For some more activities, we're actually top five finalists for the most spirited school in the nation, which I think is pretty cool, and then we find out if we won on June 7th. Our juniors hosted this year's prom on night on Mount Olympus, including a variety of spirit days to help build up anticipation for the amazing night. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, each of our leadership programs and groups have held a breakfast, snack, or lunch for our teachers to hang out while we provide some treats. Along with the acts on our teachers, we're holding a spirit week full of dress up days this week to show our support and appreciation. Our dance department held their last dance spring showcase, and then we also held our Visual Performing Arts Rally. For athletics, our baseball finished strong at 12 and 3 in league, ending the season first in the Southwest League. Our softball's continuing to push in playoffs, finishing the regular season 9 and 5 and 20 and 7 overall. Boys Across ended a great season 8 and 5 and 16 and 5 overall. Girls Across also made it to the second round of playoffs and ended their season 8 and 2 in league and 16 and 5 overall. Our boys volleyball ended off 25 overall and undefeated in league, and our track and field as well as swim have multiple athletes continuing their seasons at CIF and in playoffs. And then for our culture and climate, for mental healthness, we're Mental Health Awareness Month, our plus program has been hosting a variety of encouraging events and acts to raise awareness for mental health, especially while we end this year strong. And then actually wrote up a little thank you for you guys, for this honor. So as my final board meeting that I serve as a Vista Marietta Student Representative ends, I want to thank you all for this amazing opportunity. I've learned so much and grown immensely from this experience. I've been a product of this school, starting off with Lisa J. Mills as a kinder to now being here with you. I've loved this district and everything that has given and offered to me. The reputation that it holds has grown this town to be exactly what it is, and it's the reason that people move here, just to be a part of this amazing group of schools. I learned to think critically about the world around me and know how prepared I am to move on to the next stage of my life because of the amazing teachers I've had. As I head to college next year, I hope that those values of empathy and kindness that were taught to me in school don't get lost in the muck of everything going on in the world right now. I sat here and listened to people discuss what they think is happening in our classrooms, and I hope you all can continue to always remember the diverse and amazing students you serve. We all need to be represented, what we think and feel matters, thank you.
Thank you. It's so refreshing to be able to hear and see what's going on at each high school every time we meet, because we don't get a chance to see everything in every campus. It's great, good for the students and good for us. Superintendent Report, Dr. Anders.
Thank you. We, we do excuse Ms. Anna Pham from Marietta Valley High School tonight, she had a conflict and wasn't able to join us tonight, so that's why we didn't have the other high school representative. As part of my report tonight, actually, we're going to take a minute to recognize a few of our administrators who've recently been promoted, and they were, their purse, their promotion was approved in April, and a few of them will be on tonight's agenda as well. So we're going to start with Ms. Lynn Nord from Braille Brands. Ms. Nord, if you're here, if you'd come, oh, you just want to stand back there? Okay. Unless you want to say something. We're delighted to have Ms. Nord join us, she's been the Assistant Principal there for quite some time under the leadership of our retiring principal, Ms. Weathers, and so we're glad to have Ms. Lynn join us in that role, so thank you very much, Lynn. Next is Mr. Jason Ham, Jason, if you'd want to stand there. Jason was selected to lead Chevalier Middle School, actually, he, we made that move mid-year, whereas Ms. Nord starts in July, but Jason shoved over there right after spring break, and he's over at Chevalier. He comes to us from a different assignments, but most recently at Mesa as an Assistant Principal, so we're excited to have him there, thank you. And so we'll be approving three others tonight on the agenda. Mr. Phil Norton, if you'd stand please, Phil. Phil's accepted responsibility to return to Buchanan, but this time as principal, and he's been working in our district office for a little bit as a coordinator, doing lots with attendance and how our students are doing. So we're glad to have him return to his last previous assignment and now lead the group, so we're looking forward to having him join us, thank you. Shifting gears a little bit from our schools, Andrea Miltonberger, if you'd stand. Andrea's been in our HR department for some time and is now going to be the, I think the title's Coordinator, correct, Classified Personnel, so.
Okay. That's easy.
So we're delighted to have her join the team there, so that now you know who that role is, okay. Carrie's retiring after many years in the district, so those, that'll be fun to step in that role, thank you. And lastly, Mr. Jose Contreras, if you'd stand please, thank you. I see you brought some family members with you, thank you. Mr. Contreras is joining us, he'll be our new Director of Facilities, replacing Ms. Norwegian, who's retiring. He comes to us from Riverside County Department of Office of Education, and prior to that, Tustin Unified. We've done facilities for quite some time, so we're delighted to have you and your many years of experience join us in that role, so thank you. So this is one of those months where we have lots of celebrations and weeks of, or days of celebrating different employees. There's been the Day of the Principal, the Day of the Teacher, we have Classified Employees Week coming up. At some point in time, there was something for counselors and bus drivers, and there, there's just lots of these, there's too many to try and list. We just recognize that month is a great time to appreciate those people that really make education go and work in our schools, and it's everything from the teachers, as I saw today, who, it was a French class, and the kids had clothespins on them, and they were all going around, and if they spoke in English, you lost a clothespin, and when you didn't have any, you were out. But they had to go around and speak in French, buying clothes from the different vendors in the classroom to make a paper doll. Now, who does? Well, we do that. Right? So those are the types of things that, and that's just one little example, in one classroom today, I saw for just one, well, about three or four minutes today, and I speak Spanish, not English, or not French, so I was lost. I know that one of our board members could do that, but it was, those are the types of events that we see time and time again. I attended a kinder TK orientation, or excuse me, open house, one of our schools, and there was this ensemble of little people dancing in costume, and it was terrific to see, and I know that it wasn't just mom and dad putting on costumes, it was teachers also organizing that, but then mom's dad's making sure it happened, because there was about 600 people there watching about 100 kids do their thing. It was rather remarkable, but we see that time and time again. It takes all of us to make these things happen, to make these rich experiences occur, so we appreciate that. Lastly, I have just two more comments. As we know, this graduation and promotion ceremonies are just three short weeks away. The year is coming to a quick close, and so we appreciate the terrific work that's occurred this school year. This is pandemic year plus one, like this is the first real year out of it. It's been delightful to feel schools return to a much more normal pattern. Staff, we all know, those of us in the classrooms, and some parents know too, are still dealing with some of the effects of not having been in school regularly the way they were in the past. But we're making great progress and things are recovering well. And it's great to feel of that energy and spirit about what is important to us as we educate kids, and at the same time, there's tremendous student achievement, as demonstrated here with all the accolades that continue to come forward. Happy Mother's Day, if it's Mexican Mother's Day on the, on the 10th, Feliz Dia de los Madres, but on the, you know, for Sunday for everyone else, Happy Mother's Day. Lastly, just a reminder, as Mr. Difley reported earlier, because the next section is public comment, our community is not immune to the larger political conflicts, and those have come to Marietta. Conflict is inevitable, but contention really is a choice, if you choose to be contentious about what you disagree upon. So please choose to be a contributor and not simply. So please choose to be a contributor and not simply a critic. I wish to remind those making public comments, there are many watching and we hope that individuals will express themselves with civility for the common good and betterment of our school, students and district as a whole. Present, this concludes my comments.
Thank you. And now we'll open it for public comment.
So Mr. Difley, we have quite a stack of public comments. There's quite a few here. There is no one item that goes beyond to where we'd have to reduce minutes. So I'll set the clock for three minutes on each one. There's a variety of topics here and they're all, we've tried to group them together as best as we can. So there's somewhat of a collection of theme, but they're not necessarily all the same. So we'll start it.
Thank you. This is exciting. Well, first hear from Pastor Brian Haven. Hawkins, I'm sorry.
Followed by.
Followed by David Barrett.
That's good. I was actually hoping I could speak first.
Welcome.
Welcome. How much time I have?
Three.
Three minutes. Okay, good. About two years ago, we decided to drive to DC, my family, and we went on a 13 colony tour. And as we were driving to DC and we got there, we drove up the road. And when we got to New Hampshire, something was a little different than the history that I had been taught in school. I was taught that it was Paul Revere who had got up early in the morning and rode and yelled, "The British are coming." Until when I got to New Hampshire, there was this big plaque that went red Wentworth Cheswell. And my daughter said, "Mom, Dad, who is this? Who's this black guy? I thought it was Paul Revere." And come to find it, when you look it up, you realize that there was another gentleman who rode to wake up the Revolutionary War. And I asked myself, well, why isn't he written in history? Why did they erase the black guy along with Paul Revere? I would love to hear both stories. And then we went down to Yorktown in Virginia. And I found out that there was a gentleman by the name of James Armstead Lafayette, who was responsible for being what they called back then a double spy, who pretended to be a slave. He's ultimately one of the reason why Benedict Arnold was, was found out to be a traitor. Why am I bringing this up? Because it seems as though throughout history, the representation of blacks and Hispanics minorities seem to be written out of history. That seems to be a problem. And in 2023, I'm seeing that's the same thing that's happening across the country. So I want to share with you guys this amazing story because I know that I would love to see the books that represent all people be written. Don't, don't, don't erase. It's ugly. His, American history is ugly, but it's also beautiful at the same time. Because as Horton here's a who says, "We are here." So I'm gonna share with you guys the, the thought of doing the right thing when you decide what books to ban and what books to accept. Because I hope we don't get into that place, but there was a kid by the name of Charlie. Charlie had found a nickel on the floor and he went and bought a chocolate bar and got a ticket to the Willy Wonka factory. And if you remember in the story, Charlie at the end was getting disqualified. He was the last kid because he had drunk the fizzy lifting drink. And him and Papa Joe had run all the way up to the roof and touched it. And they were about to be picked out of the chocolate factory until he reached in his pocket and put the everlasting gobstopper on Gene Wilder's desk, who was Willy Wonka. And he won that prize. The reason why he won that prize is because he did the right thing. I wanted to remind you of your childhood because when we were children, we had innocence. And we didn't let anybody rob us of that. And I hope the decision that you make don't rob the future generation of our children. God bless you.
Thank you.
Eric Ducklett.
Well, this one? Yeah, okay. All right. Hi, my name is Eric Dukelet. I live here in Marietta. And I attended the last meeting and I wanted to speak about the textbook, Give Me Liberty, because it was rejected at the last meeting while a bunch of the other books were approved. And some things were said here in the meeting about why some people had a problem with the book. Some of the comments were op-ed or many op-eds in the textbook. Left-wing bias, bias like the view that there was a broken trust, maybe that's related to other things, but. And then not a board member, but a public speaker felt the book was garbage. That was a word one person used. So since I'm retired AP World History teacher, I went ahead and came in the next Monday and sat down for three hours with the book and I looked at it. And I, I really don't think it's garbage. I don't think it can be fairly categorized as garbage. But of course, everyone has a subjective opinion. And then I contacted every member of the board by email. And I did ask to kind of find out what part of the book was objectionable. Was it a page number or a certain chapter or section or something like that? So I spent about three hours reviewing it. And I did find some interesting things, but I did find instances where there were opinions of historical figures, but they were balanced by someone with an opposing point of view, like on page 976 and 977. Dr. Martin Luther King wrote a letter from a Birmingham jail and that was published. And then there was something called the Southern Manifesto that was included in this textbook. On page 1,082 and 3, there is a pro NAFTA message from then-President Bill Clinton. And then there's a critique of globalization. The pro NAFTA was 1993, the anti-globalization is 1999. And then there were some other ones that only had one point of view, where a Civil War general named William Bernie wrote about a situation where some in 1897, some Mohabbenians were deported. And he had mentioned that that was contrary to law. Anyway, I, I did not get any feedback from any of the board members about any chapter or section or page number in the book. And I would like, if a book is going to be rejected, I would like a little more specific reason. So I think it's a bad idea to reject the book. And it's possible that, you know, the people who voted against it have not even seen the book or looked it over or reviewed it. And so I would urge you to change your vote to a yes. And thank you.
Thank you.
David Barrett. Followed by Chris, Ms. Chris Tomasi. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Glasses on. Dr. Andrus and board members. Our family moved to Marietta 32 years ago. In fact, we actually witnessed the unveiling of Marietta's first light signal on that day. However, tonight I want to thank you for the opportunity to raise my concerns about the textbook adoption process undertaken by the district thus far. My wife and I have both retired from a combined 60-plus years in education and have been involved in the process numerous times. But first, let me read ed code 60002. Each district board shall provide for substantial teacher involvement in the selection of instructional materials and shall promote the involvement of parents and other members of the community in the selection of instructional materials. Next, I'd like to highlight the discrepancy in the district's adoption process in regards to community involvement stated in the ed code. It looks like the parents and community have been greatly shortchanged by your recent efforts. I have the utmost respect for the evaluation of the teachers involved, but the input of the community, namely parents, grandparents, residents and taxpayers is necessary according to the ed code. In my opinion, the district has extremely disrespected the stakeholders by severely cutting them out of the process, except for a few weeks to view only the teacher's choice and not the complete list of textbooks on California's approved list. In addition, Dr. Andrus, I feel was a slap in the face to the community members who chose to speak at the last board meeting when you, at the last moment, cut their public remarks to two minutes. After leaving them virtually out of the process, the least you could have done is give community members who cared enough to evaluate the textbooks and communicate their thoughts in public their full three minutes. Finally, more than 25 years ago, when the district was exploding with the growth of the area, the community was extended much more respect in the process. When it came time to recruit volunteers to campaign and support school bond measures for the badly needed facilities, the community was ready and willing. Dr. Andrus, something to think about for the upcoming special board meeting next week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Tomasi will be followed by Terry Wells. Welcome.
Thank you. I want to follow up with you on the discussion about the AP History textbook. There were questions about the, why the new textbooks were not adopted sooner. The answer is the budget. In California, each district receives a base amount of money from the state based on how many students they have. Districts receive extra money for each student who is socio-economically disadvantaged or meets other requirements. The result is that districts like Marietta and Temecula receive very little extra money. And districts like Paris High School District, where Mr. Pardue teaches, receive $1,000 or more per pupil or per year extra. These higher funded districts obviously have that extra money to spend on materials and teacher salaries. I also want to discuss the role of the school board. One of the roles of the board is to set policies. The district has been following the board established policy for selecting curriculum. For the 21 years I was on the board, I, like you, read through the materials submitted by our teacher and curriculum experts. And after board questions and discussions, all selections were approved. I always judge the result of our vote based on student performance. Marietta students have high test scores. Our graduate, graduation rate is 97%, one of the highest in the state. Other metrics echo the success. Obviously, our teacher and curriculum experts know what they are doing when selecting curriculum. I understand that next week you are meeting to again discuss the AP History material. Based on past evidence, I trust that our teaching and curriculum experts have selected the best textbook for our students. AP History is a college level class and our staff experts have the expertise to determine the textbooks for this class. And I encourage you to support the staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wells will be followed by Gia Rueta. Good evening, members of the school board and community.
My name is Terry Wells. I am a Marietta resident. I retired from a position in the Palos Verdes Unified School District where I managed a middle school library for 10 years. The reason I am here tonight is because I am angered that at the last school board meeting, you rejected the adoption of the excellent AP History textbook, Give Me History, Give Me Liberty, Give Me History. One board member claimed the textbook read, quote, "Read like an op-ed piece," end quote. And another one of you called this textbook, quote, "Garbage," end quote. I have in my hands a letter from Eric Foner, the textbook author, which takes nine minutes to read. I have only three minutes on this podium, but you can read it in its entirety. I only summarize here. Columbia University Professor Eric Foner is a renowned historian and also a winner of the Pulitzer Prize, Bancroft Prize and many other awards. His textbook has been reviewed by writers from the left, right and center. In the National Review, "A Bastion of Modern Conservatism", the reviewer declared that the book, "The Story of American Freedom Upon Which Give Me Liberty Is Based, Approaches Brilliance," that is a quote. In the letter which I hold in my hand, which I am also happy to distribute to community members, Professor Foner highlights the extensive research that has gone into the book as well as its widespread use in high schools, community colleges and four-year colleges. It is used in red states and blue states and by liberal and conservative teachers. This textbook is the top-selling history book in the United States. Foner states, and I quote, "Of course I hold political opinions, as does every author of a work of history, but the contents of Give Me Liberty are based on my own extensive research in historical documents and on reading the scholarly books of other historians, not simply political prejudice. I strive to be fair-minded to all outlooks. Indeed, the underlying theme of Give Me Liberty is that the definition of freedom, the central idea in our political culture, has been debated throughout our history. And the book explains how Americans of all backgrounds and persuasions have thought about and attempted to achieve freedom. Each chapter contains an insert juxtaposing two statements about freedom from its historical time period. The point is to enable students to think for themselves about how they and other Americans define this key idea. This is the opposite of attempting to impose a political, a particular outlook on students. In conclusion, the accusations of political bias in this textbook are unfounded. I urge the board to reconsider its decision and support the adoption of the Give Me Liberty textbook."
Wow.
Following Gia Rueta's comments, we'll hear from John Vescas. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So 250 years ago, starting this, in this December, will be the anniversary of the Boston Tea Party. Why is that important? Because representation matters. It mattered to our colonies back then and it matters to this board. And so I want to start by thanking the board for allowing or valuing student representation by having student board members voted in. So well done, great move. So I live in Temecula, so why am I here? Well, Mr. Pardue said that president when he was front and center at the TV USD anti-CRT workshop, where he boisterously discouraged the board president from ejecting a woman who made an inflammatory racist comment to a speaker. So thank you, Mr. Pardue, for essentially inviting comments from people who don't live or work here. After all, what's good for the gander is good for the goose. So keeping with the animal analogy, Ms. Vandergriff, I wonder why your school district would allow a fox in the hen house? The fact that you homeschooled your kids and they weren't even public school educated makes me believe your reasons for being here may be disingenuous. It's as if you're here to dismantle the amazing work that the superintendent and the president and the rest of this board have worked so hard to create. Furthermore, sending out surveys to teachers, teacher input on textbooks through email is a common educational practice. So there's no need for fear mongering or causing havoc. The sky isn't falling, no chicken little needed here. Perhaps it would be better if, maybe if you just resigned due to your complete lack of knowledge regarding the public education and make way for someone who's better qualified to serve the community, someone who's actually working for the betterment of students instead of trying to sabotage the district from within. Finally, I wish to urge the board to trust the teacher's choice of the book, Give Me Liberty, for the AP US History text. It's a comprehensive coverage of American history, has clear and accessible writing style. It emphasizes the experiences of marginalized people such as women, African-Americans and Native Americans and truly implements the Fair Education Act. It's also, it also includes primary source documents and critical thinking questions to help students engage in the material. So please let the expert educators guide you on your decision and approve the book. Thank you and have a good evening.
Following Mr. Vasquez, we'll hear from Kelly Carrillo.
Hello, school board. This is not what I usually do, but I'm here on behalf of my daughter, my family, my nieces that live in the town. My daughter was a student at Coal Canyon Elementary when they first started. She went first through fifth there. She graduated from her at, at a valley high school. So we've been here for a while. I like to talk about the transparency of the board and the, and the guidelines that you guys have for who's teaching in the classrooms. Apparently there was a gentleman. Apparently, there was a gentleman dressed as a woman teaching kindergarten children at Coal Canyon. And when asked to get the information about what was going on there, basically, you can't tell, you know, what your guidelines and who it is. I feel that the parents should know to have a choice if they would prefer to have that or not. And being as we're talking about the mental health month and stuff, somebody who believes they're a woman, but they're actually physically a man, that just doesn't jive with me. So, I'm just going to civilly and diligently do my part, which to get traditional family, get the, get proper education in the classrooms. And also, I'm asking for transparency for if that's happening and people don't agree with that. Parents, we should have the right to find out what's going on and basically not, oh, well, we can't tell you this or that. To give us that choice. So, I will, this is, like I said, this is not something I do, but it's important to me. It's important to the community that, you know, we have a voice. I'm sad that it has to take coming here and bringing it out, but I'm just putting it out there that I don't agree with that. And I will do my best to campaign to get people that are care about the kids and the parents' rights and what's going on. And also the transparency of things to hold you accountable for what you guys do, because you guys are all responsible for things. And I know we have to, as you say, civil discourse. So, here I am, I'm speaking about it, and I ain't happy, and I'm not the only one. People gotta work, right? I just, I got lucky. I would try to attend, and I'm trying to learn the processes. It's not something I do. I'm a construction worker, but I'm a proud son of a mother and father who survived World War II. And I love my country. I love everything that's done for me. So, here I am standing up and letting you know there's other people like me that can't make it here and that aren't all involved. But we care and we care about the kids, we care about our communities, we care about our schools. So, that's all I got to say.
Following Mrs. Carrillo, Lucky Haratunian.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Carrillo, chemistry teacher at Vista Marytown High School. I'm here with some of my colleagues from our three different high schools to present to you the concerns that we emailed you about earlier this week. The majority of our high school science teachers wanted to bring to your attention the concerns we have regarding the current educational, science educational opportunities provided by MVUSD. And would like to propose some ideas for improvement. Please consider that every other subject, including history, mathematics, English, visual performing arts, and world languages gives students opportunities to accelerate or challenge themselves earlier in a student's career. It is not until the second to the last year in our district that science students are allowed to challenge themselves with AP or dual courses. Unfortunately, when talking with our own students about taking AP courses, many of them shy away because they think the course is too hard or they do not feel prepared. As teachers passionate about science, it's personally heartbreaking to hear that students are not confident in their skills and knowledge to challenge themselves in the field of science. We'd like to propose three ideas to help improve science education taught in our school district. Since math and science are tied together in many ways, we propose that the district explore the idea of accelerated science pathway that mirrors the already established mathematics pathway. For those sixth graders who are either in accelerated math or have the curiosity and passion to choose a more challenging science pathway, let's accelerate science six, seven, and eight and have eighth graders take biology. This will allow students to take chemistry as freshmen and expand their science opportunities in high school for the last three years they attend. Another option would be to offer an accelerated science track in high school. Interested freshmen would take the accelerated biology course that moves through course content at a faster pace than the regular sections. Sophomores would do the same in chemistry. This acceleration would be at a pace that is more like an AP course with the intention of preparing strong science students to confidently take AP courses and succeed in them. A third option would allow advanced math science, or sorry, advanced math students, those freshmen who are in advanced math two or above, to skip biology as a freshman and take chemistry and then take AP Biology as sophomores, followed by subsequent AP Science courses junior and senior year. Again, this would allow students who are strong in math to accelerate in science and take more advanced science classes during high school years. Acceleration in science is a real need in our district. Right now, on average, only six percent of students district-wide are enrolled in any AP Science class. This low number needs to be raised. Science is what took humanity to the moon, brought medicine and vaccines to defeat diseases, and improved our technology. If MVUSD students want to be a part of the future, we need to make this change. Otherwise, we risk them, you know, leaving the race. So, thank you.
Thank you. Following Mrs. Haratunian, Jose Correno will speak. Welcome.
Thank you. A study on June tenth, two thousand and twenty-two by the William Institute indicated one point nine million of our youth between ages of twelve to seventeen, one point four percent have become LGBTQ. Now, according to the CDC, it's up to two point four million, zero point six percent of our population. The Center of Disease Control indicate that they are at risk for psychological distress and anxiety at a seventy-five percent, depression at sixty-one percent, suicide at thirty percent, substance abuse alcohol at forty-seven percent, a high-risk increase on HIV, a very high rate of violent radicalization that's encouraged by groups of socialist, major negative health issues. Their education is severely affected not by going to school, constantly absent, affecting, affecting their school performances, all linked to low graduation rates, and on and on it goes. All created by CRT. Taught by teachers. Taught by teachers. This quasi-neo-Marxist ideology to sexually indoctrinate our children is pure child abuse and nothing else. The destruction of gender, the destruction of the nuclear family that is destroying our civilization and devaluing life. This is a demonic position of our children, a spiritual warfare and the destruction of our nation. If we do nothing, we are not just, we are, okay, let me say it again. If we do nothing, are we not just as guilty as those who started this child's sacrifice? It's very evident. You saw last board meeting, a lot of woke teachers. You just heard a few of them. CRT is alive and well in this district. And where I was told once before it wasn't here, oh, yes, it is. Loud and clear. And it needs to get out because a lot of these children that are, well, you know, they're shooting down schools. They are radical at this point, and of course, they're being encouraged to destroy. They're becoming very violent. And whose fault is that? Thank you. Oh, I wanted to show you something real quick, if you don't believe me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to remind you again, if I hear outbursts from the audience like that, I will clear the room. I'm not kidding. You have to have some respect. You may hate what someone else says, but it's up to you to be a civil person and calm. You have a chance to speak. Every one of you have a chance to speak. Okay, Jose Correno. Welcome. And following Mr. Correno is Ellen Larson. Welcome.
Thank you. I feel very welcome. Good evening. I'd like to speak about two items tonight, mainly relating about last meeting we had here. The first one's very relatable to what just happened. Item one, audience rules. At the last meeting, the superintendent set some clear and fair rules, instructing the audience not to be disrupted. But a comment made by a board member seems to contradict these instructions. She seemed to be making a judgment on the Foner book based on audience reaction. Towards the end of the meeting, I heard on the audio recording, because I didn't stay for the whole thing. So, she, she obviously, by her statement, said that based on the audience reaction. So, that's kind of contradicting what was initial, the initial instructions were. If you're going to take audience loudness as support, we need to know, and so we can act accordingly. Because it's not fair that one side gets to be loud and not the other. Item number two, there seems to be a heavy bias from some of the board members towards the pro Foner book teachers because of their education. I'd like to talk about that. In the last part of the last meeting, one of you asked, what makes us think that we know more than the teachers? I will answer that question with a real-life example. Years ago, when I pulled my oldest daughter out of the Avid program, I was told by the expert teachers that because I didn't have a degree and was low income and brown, she would probably not get into college without the help of Avid. Well, I pulled her out. She is now an oncology nurse and working on her master's degree. My son, who is a mechanical engineer, and my other daughter, who has a master's in education, also skipped Avid. They're from the same disadvantaged household. So, considering this experience and the record of other government experts lately, you may understand my skepticism towards these experts. Some of the speakers last time played up all their college education titles and letters behind their names and claim more value to their opinion than parents. I'd like to add a different perspective. After high school, I didn't have the privilege of going straight to college. Instead, I joined the Marine Corps. And after that, I went straight to work as a cable splicer to provide for my family. So, I don't have fancy letters behind my name. But I do have some informal letters and titles that may give me some experience on how to educate children. I have a BA and DAD of six and a master's in PAPA, Papa, of thirteen. But most relevant title for this meeting I have is the title of Muriel taxpayer for the last thirty-three years. I ask you, please be open-minded to all speakers regardless of our educational privileges. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good to see you. Good evening, President Tiffley, board members, Dr. Andrus. I'm going to talk to you tonight a little bit, share with you some comments on student voice and engagement. I've been engaged in this district for over thirty years. For the last twelve-plus years, I've been a family engagement consultant for the Riverside County Office of Education. I'm currently a member of the Murrieta Valley Unified School District Team of the Community Engagement Initiative, part of the California Collaborative for Excellence in Education, which is also a part of statewide system of support. Happy to be serving with wonderful people from Chevila and the district who are working on a problem of practice that involves our students. So, I think you can see I have strong support for and understanding of student voice and engagement. So, I want to thank you as a board and as a district for creating a student board member position and for creating the superintendent's Student Advisory Council. Because it is through these kinds of opportunities for our students that they get to engage in meaningful, meaningful opportunities of engagement for them. They are the customer and we need to listen to them. I'm going to share with you a quote from Abraham Lincoln. He said, "A child is a person who is going to carry on what you have started. He is going to sit where you are sitting, and when you are gone, he will attend to those things which you think are important. You may adopt all the policies you please, but how they are carried out depends on him. He will assume control of your cities, states, and nations. All your books are going to be judged, praised, or condemned by him. The fate of humanity is in his hands, so it might be well to pay him some attention." Thank you.
We're going to hear from Francis Burns next. And after Mr. Burns, we'll hear from John Leonard. Welcome.
Thank you, President Tiffley. Good evening, board members. Hope everybody is well today. First, board member, Sue Stein couldn't be here this evening. She wanted to thank you for some of your help, but she did send you an email. So, please, oh, great, fantastic. The next thing I want to do is, I promise, Mr. Tiffley, I'm going to be civil. The next thing I want to do is I want to thank the district because, for approving a teacher on a special assignment as an assistant principal at Thompson Middle School next year. We are a big school and we have a lot of challenges, and I'm sure that's going to help us very much. So, thank you all very much at the district level. I'm sure Dr. Andrus had something to do with that and whoever else did. Thank you very much. I also want to publicly thank Dr. Rochelle Filer. She's a terrific math department leader at our schools. She's very professional, very personable, and very helpful. And I'm very grateful for everything she's been doing for us over the years. Now, I wanted to speak just briefly about some of these proposals, legislative proposals, specifically AB ten seventy-eight, AB six six five, and AB six five nine. AB ten seventy-eight, this effectively prevents local school board control of books and curriculum in public schools. I hope that, I hope that's enough to get everybody's attention and oppose this bill. Another bill, AB six six five, this bill would allow children as young as twelve years old to receive mental health treatment or counseling without parental permission. People that young are called children for a reason. While mental health is very important, they do need to get parental support when they're that, when they're that young. And the other, the other bill I want to bring to your attention is AB six five nine. You know, this would add to HPV vaccination to the list of required immunizations for children to attend school. I have no idea why this would be considered. I'm not aware of students dropping left and right, you know, out of dying from something of this, you know, from what this is supposed to prevent. So, hopefully, you'll all join me in opposing that as well. And the last thing I would say regarding your textbook adoption, there were many instances by people last week, they cited references in the book where it was clearly biased. And I just urge you, when you go to consider this next week, ask yourself if bias has a place in, or an educational purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And following Mr. Leonard's talk will be Yvette Anthony. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. At the last board meeting, we heard from the teachers committee that created the new social studies and history curricula. And what struck me listening to all the teachers that addressed the board last week and even tonight is the sense of elitism they so casually exhibit. When taxpayers objected to just one of fifteen proposed textbooks, we were dismissed as not being as qualified as the teachers to offer an opinion. We were reminded of their qualifications. Multiple master's degrees, I am to assume, gives one a better sense of judgment. On the contrary, I have found that as in the last decade or two, in some cases anyway, it seems the instruction one gains in the university is equal to the loss of common sense. Not being able or willing to recognize what many saw as obvious bias in the one rejected textbook was telling. Elitism is a concept contrary to American political thought. We certainly appreciate others' opinions, but we are very capable of coming to our own conclusions. And this segues a bit into my next point, which is mass And this segues a bit into my next point, which is, may I suggest that the, the board adopt a robust civics curriculum to be included at all grade levels. Former Secretary of State Michael Pompeo, love him or hate him, in a November interview claimed the greatest danger the nation faces is the lack of civics and American exceptionalism being taught in our public schools. The single most important decision you make as a board is who you're placing in front of our children. The question of do they share the values and beliefs of the community? Do they love their country is far more important than how many advanced degrees they possess. And lastly, I would, I'm sure that you have a no cellphone policy at the school, I imagine you do. And I ask that you aggressively pursue the enforcement of that. And also, I would ask you to please ensure that artificial intelligence never makes it into our classrooms. A Google worldview dominates. They control search engines, internet platform hosting, social media advertising, virtual reality, and state-of-the-art AI technology of every sort. And I'm sure your IT team can tell you and describe what's coming our way. I think AI in the classroom is dangerous. It needs to be resisted and not something to be welcomed. And I wish that I had a little bit more time. I would like to say, because I've heard this so many times, I would like to say that at the Temecula School Board meeting where Mr. Purdue is always being ridiculed for, that woman never made a racist statement to that man, never did. I was sitting directly in front of her, and I know what she said, and it wasn't racist. Maybe it wasn't the smartest thing for her to say, but it wasn't a racist statement. And people are always bringing it up, and probably the ones bringing it up are ones who never heard what she said. So I have, and I just felt necessary to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Following you will be Leah Pennelli. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't see the clock. I want to concur with some of the other speakers just regarding the curriculum decision or how that all played out, that it was a slap in the face to the community and the parents, the way we were excluded from the process, which I'm still not happy about, but I guess we'll be talking next Thursday about that book again. So hopefully we'll have, well, it's too late. I do want to say, though, I did read the K through five curriculum. Thought it was pretty darn good, so I'm pretty happy with that. But this, this flyer, this got emailed to me last week. There is Adrienne Atune, a fourth grade teacher at Avaha Elementary School. She was on TikTok saying, "When one of your students feels comfortable enough to come out to you." So, I mean, she would be teaching ninth graders, I mean, nine-year-olds, right? So I was really taken back by this. I consider this grooming in the elementary prepubescent age. And I'm wondering, she's very excited, she's very happy when, when her student, her nine-year-olds come out to her. And I'm wondering what the school policy is on this. As far as she's excited, is she excited to tell their parents that their nine-year-old is gay? And I'm wondering what the school board policy on this as well. Are they, are they disclosing this to the nine, to the parents of the nine-year-olds that at school their kid has come out as gay and this is being disclosed to the parents? What is the policy on that? I did look through the online, through all the board policies. I did not find a policy on this. But I think one needs to be made. There needs to be complete parent disclosure and transparency. And then, I didn't bring my glasses up here, but Marietta Teachers Union, they have a Equity and Human Rights Committee. They're promoting Julian as a mermaid. Oh, thanks. As, are these ones mine? No. This, this is a grooming book. So I can tell you, I came to speak on item G1. You want to do a feasibility study for a bond measure? First of all, BB money isn't gone yet. It may be going soon. But I would prefer until we have some policy in place to protect our children from the groomers in this district, that I will never support a bond issue. And I will walk and talk and spread the word. If you even try to put it on the ballot, I will completely oppose it until there's, here, I'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leah. Let's see. And after Leah will be, now my glasses are not working. Stephanie Holloway.
Good evening. I am a parent of a third grader in this wonderful district of ours. Thanks to the expertise of our teachers, administrators, and support staff. Indeed, our great district is one of the reasons my family chose to move to Marietta. I would like to express my deep concern and dissatisfaction regarding the competency and qualifications of board member Julie Vandergrift. My purpose is to publicly lodge a complaint against Mrs. Vandergrift regarding her clear lack of competency and qualifications for the position she is currently holding. I have observed several instances where her actions and decision-making have raised serious doubts about her ability to fulfill her responsibilities fairly and effectively. When Ms. Vandergrift was campaigning for her seat, my husband and I had the opportunity of having a conversation with her face to face as she was canvassing our neighborhood. At the top of her campaign flyer were the words, "parent choice." I asked her what that meant to her, and she replied, this is a quote, "I think we should keep contractors out of our schools." Unsure of what she was referring to, I asked her to elaborate, to which she said in a now hushed tone, and I am quoting again, "you know, gay panels." Not only did this comment reveal that she clearly suffers from homophobia, but it also illustrates just how out of touch Ms. Vandergrift is with what actually goes on in our public schools. Furthermore, she has made numerous statements that have exposed her ineptitude at her current position. For example, in a previous board meeting earlier this year, she had to ask what 21st century learning skills were, a term anyone who has spent any time in our public schools over the last 25 years would know. It is my understanding that Ms. Vandergrift homeschooled her own children, which may explain her lack of experience and knowledge of our schools. It is evident that Ms. Vandergrift lacks the necessary experience, knowledge, and expertise required to make an informed and sound decision in matters regarding public education. Her limited understanding of educational policies, curriculum development, and pedagogical practices will result in detrimental consequences to our students and overall quality of the education within our schools. It is essential for board members to possess the requisite qualifications and competency to effectively address the complex challenges facing our education system. Unfortunately, the lack of knowledge and expertise displayed by Ms. Vandergrift undermines the integrity of our board and our reputable district and compromises the quality of our children's, my child's, education. Therefore, I respectfully request that the board determine whether Ms. Vandergrift should continue in her current position, taking into account her demonstrated lack of competency and qualifications. Thank you.
Following Mrs. Holloway will be, was that Lori?
Is that Lori Nielsen? Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Before I go into my concerns, I just want to share with you some more exciting news about Vista Marietta. They were among one of the schools with the most entries at their track program into CIF Southern Section Division One prelims, and they were featured on Cal Prep, Cal Track, and I'm super excited about that as a track mom. So I just wanted to share that with you. Yay. Go Broncos. So, to continue, good evening, members of the board. As a concerned parent, I believe that school board members should have certain qualifications. Perspective candidates should have experience in public education. This can be as an involved parent who has served on PTA boards, school site council, volunteered consistently in the classroom or during extracurricular, school-related sports or activities. A qualified individual may have involvement in one of our many parent PACs such as APAC or LPAC. They could also be a current or former teacher, administrator, superintendent, or leader who understands how school businesses run. School board members should not come on board with the expectation to learn basic components of education on the job, such as usual business-like PLCs and typical education-related language. Trust is essential in this position, and trustee Purdue always mentions public trust during the meetings. And I wholeheartedly agree with him. School districts require knowledgeable individuals who the public can trust to make informed decisions about student success. Speaking of trust, I want to address you directly, Julie Vandergrift. How can I trust you to make decisions on behalf of my children and their education when all six of your children are homeschooled and you therefore had no involvement in public schools? How can I trust you to make decisions on behalf of my children and their education when you don't understand the basics of public education because you've never been involved at any level? I have observed you on the dais since being elected and see how misinformed you are regarding what's happening in our schools, how school businesses run, our students, and their capabilities. You don't attend the trainings offered to you, and from what I understand, you're not visiting schools or meeting with leadership on matters beyond your own personal agenda. After reviewing public records, you are looking for these gotcha moments in regard to policy and trainings and curriculum. I urge you to step down. You don't have the experience or knowledge to make decisions on behalf of our children and are not fit to be on the board. On a side note for public record, the next special board meeting date is May 18th, and I believe the agenda's on the, the agenda that is the AP History textbook. So please show up and support. That is all I have for you. Thank you so much.
Nielsen, following Mrs. Nielsen will be Alice Forné. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, member of the school board. Mr. Purdue, would you please pay attention every day, every time, all the time? These guys do. I know you can do it too. Okay? Not that. All right. My children have spent all their years in Marietta District. I'm here to express my deep concerns regarding Julie Vandergrift's position on this board. Her motives and qualifications lack. She hasn't had the best interest of our students, teachers, and community in mind. She's failing to uphold the values of our distinguished district. Board members like yourself often have some experience with public school systems their children attend, or they work, or volunteer, in some way they're involved. Or, and in most of all, they share, they share their love and the great enthusiasm for our public schools, which is even more important, and she does not. Mrs. Vandergrift, why are you here? Do not smile. I find it troubling that in fact she lacks trust in our district and has never sent any of her six children to public schools. Plus, she believes in censorship of many library books and textbooks. Why censor so many books? She has 1950s type of mindset that students aren't capable thinkers and must be sheltered, even our high schoolers who are ready to graduate. The voters elected you to be a positive influence. But I'm sorry, I'm disappointed. Thank you very much.
Following Ms. Forné will be Kelly Swanson. Welcome.
Good evening. My husband and I have lived on the west side of Marietta for 31 years. The last time I spoke at a school board meeting, I was nine months pregnant with my fourth child. Lois Shumway, if some of you may remember her, she had just been arrested and handcuffed on the campus of Marietta Elementary School for giving lunch money from the lost and found to a five-year-old who had lost her lunch money. That was a bad decision made by the school personnel. It didn't benefit students or parents. I'm here to say that the people who have come here to call Nick Purdue a racist, shout-out interjections while others speak, and attempt to intimidate anyone who has opinions that differ from his or her own are not the majority. Being loud and rude doesn't make you the majority. When those of us who did not agree with past school board members' views, we voted. We didn't shout racist. In the eighties, I taught high school biology and all the physical sciences. For 23 years, up until last year, I taught second grade and fourth grade at Marietta Elementary School. I feel I have a pulse on parents' opinions. Parents didn't want Common Core or anti-science masks on their children. The school board voted for these measures to be eligible for federal funds, not because parents wanted them. Parents don't want their kids taught their race will limit his or her potential. They don't want restroom confusion, another decision made to obtain federal lunch money. Parents want the right to teach their children about social issues like homosexuality and transvestite behavior when and where they choose, not in the classroom. Social emotional learning known as SEL and Pandora, they ask prying questions about a child's family and details about their feelings. These are geared at gaining a child's trust from people outside the nuclear family. Many of the questions use vocabulary beyond the child's understanding. Parents want schools to stick to teaching academic disciplines. Most parents don't want restorative behavior modification in school. This appears to mean that the child who has broken rules, disrespected staff members, or has caused disruption in classes aren't punished, but get to participate in circle time with their friends, go for a walk with an administrator, and choose a prize from the treasure box before returning to the class they disrupted. Victims of bad behavior and their parents want the naughty child to be punished with consequences for their behavior. I retired a year earlier than I planned to because for teachers and well-behaved students, the classroom has become a hostile environment. My own children graduated from MVHS. The oldest in 2005 was number 10 out of 1,000. The second was number 2 out of 600. The third was number 8 out of 650. And that fourth child, after receiving his FDA-approved, CDC-recommended vaccine, died. There are 70 of such vaccines now. Nick Purdue is our representative, of whom we are well pleased.
Following Mrs. Swanson, Lisa Murray. Welcome.
Hi, y'all. Thank you. I am a teacher in this district for 17 years. I also have a child in the district in second grade, and I love and appreciate my administrators, my teachers that I work with, and our bargaining unit. And I would like to say to you guys that I have some very serious concerns with members on the board and social media. And I do feel that Pastor Tim Thompson is making our schools a target. And in the vein of protecting all of our students, I would like to ask that we close our campuses so that our students and staff can stay safe. I know at my site, it is open to all parents. They can walk on campus. There's not a sweep done at the end of it, so anybody can be on our campus at any part of the day. And I think this is something that both sides can agree on if we all want children to be safe in our, in our schools. So with that being said, I would, that's all I would like to propose to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Ripert, who will be followed by Rachel Fish.
Lisa Murray is next.
Oh, Lisa, I'm sorry. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Andrus, President Tiffly, and members of the board. My name is Lisa Murray. I am the Marietta Educators Association Vice President and Lead Negotiator. I stand before you this evening on behalf of the MEA Executive Board and Negotiations Team to ask you to vote to approve the tentative contract agreement we recently reached with the district. I'm happy to announce that of the 73% of our membership who voted a few weeks back, an overwhelming 94% of those members voted to ratify this tentative agreement. This year, thanks to MEA's positive working relationship with the district and our collective bargaining efforts, we were able to make additional, much-needed, and well-deserved progress toward improving salary compensation for our members. This year, in addition to negotiating a 7% salary increase for all our bargaining unit members, MEA's focus was on improving extra-duty compensation as well as adding and/or increasing compensation for class size and caseload overages. We also successfully reduced overall caseload ratios for our nurses and psychologists. We began our efforts earlier than usual this year with both sides focused on the goal of reaching a settlement in a timely manner, and despite a few hiccups along the way, we were able to accomplish that goal. I'm proud to say that with our combined efforts, we were successful in reaching a tentative agreement with the district sooner than we ever have before. In addition to our regular bargaining agreement negotiations, we have recently signed updated MOUs for improving our elementary PE program, increasing compensation for summer school teachers, and SLP and psychologist coverage compensation, just signed today. As well, we are still actively working on MOUs for co-teaching, transitional kindergarten, learn-at-home, and elementary class size overage compensation. All of these additional MOUs will serve to improve both working conditions for our members and learning conditions for our students. While there is no doubt that we are extremely pleased with the progress that was made this year, there is still plenty of work to be done, and MEA does not plan to stop advocating for continuous positive change anytime soon. Our class sizes at all levels remain too large to effectively meet the multitude of needs for our student population. School safety and student discipline continue to be a major concern that must be addressed promptly. Improving school culture, staff morale, and teacher retention are all areas in dire need of attention. While together we have made tremendous positive change over the course of the last few years, our work is not finished. We must keep the forward momentum and continue to walk alongside one another in building a district that outshines all others. Finally, I'd like to thank both the MEA and district negotiations teams, and especially Lee Lockwood. Lee, it's been a pleasure sitting across the table from you these past couple of years. We will miss you, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. And Mr. Rightout, my team looks forward to initiating you into the wonderful and exciting world of MBUSD negotiations. Hopefully, you've been fully prepped for the fun you are about to have. Thank you.
Mrs. Rupert.
Rupert.
Rupert, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I wasn't going to speak tonight, and I was hoping to follow up a couple of parents at my school, but I'm before them, so, but please listen to them. Hi.
Welcome.
Oh, thanks. Sorry, I am so beyond tired. Hi, I'm Jennifer Rupert, third-grade teacher at Buchanan. I'm exhausted, so I'll probably stumble over my words. I wasn't going to speak, but lucky you, I decided to share a couple of thoughts that I've had running through my brain all year. My class of 29 students is just one of many classes in our school that has needs that are too vast to explain. I feel inadequate at the end of every day because I can't hit the very needy, social, emotional needs of most of my class, as well as their academic needs. My kids who are on target seem to be put on the backboard while my attention goes to my 17 behaviors and needy kids and my seven RSP kids, all while balancing a daily schedule of students coming and going to get supports outside of my class. I have only 30 minutes scattered throughout the day where I have all my class at the same time. All of our resources are going to those in need and very little to the kids who want to stretch their thinking. This is not an internal problem at my school, but rather not enough staff to support all the children's needs. Next, we have become too soft on attendance. I have one child with 82 tardies. Eighty-two tardies, and one child who has only been in my class 70% of the year. I actually had one that was worse last year. Both of these kids are extremely capable of meeting grade-level standards. We tried sarbing, or we tried counseling with parents, mom won't show up. But what's happening? These kids don't get started or sarbed anymore, and these very capable kids are going to fall through the cracks. Finally, I respectfully, sorry, asked the board not not to ask us to avoid Thursday nights for school events if you are not going to show. Last night, my school had its open house, and you guys didn't show. Nobody showed, and that's okay. But then let us have it when we want. So having two days left in this week, where we are still finishing up CASP teaching and Mother's Day gifts is like walking through sludge to finish the week with any pep in our step. We're extremely tired today. After just hearing that Thompson got another AP, I mystified that we couldn't get another first-grade teacher for Buchanan next year, so our classes, our first-grade classes, will be packed again or drive us into another combo class, which is ludicrous for one, two. It's ludicrous at any. We have too many combos, and they think it's the solution, and it's not. Sorry, is Bill still here? Oh, good, he's gone. He's my future principal. Yes, I just don't want to cause anything for him. Anyways, I do want to thank MEA for all their continued hard work for us and our support in trying to get our class sizes lowered. But sometimes it's not just about money. I would, me personally, not speaking for everybody, I'd rather have my same pay but fewer students so I could feel more effective in my classroom. However, money does help. Thank you.
Rachel Fish.
We have one more that also talked about class size with no name. Is there someone who want to talk about class size and put their name on it? Okay, we just don't have a name. Okay, thanks, Shannon.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Rachel Fish, and I am here tonight as a parent of an almost-third grader and almost-kindergartner at Buchanan Elementary. The last time I was here, I spoke as one of the only parents who willingly volunteered my son for the combo first, second grade class. Tonight, I am here to express my concern as to what a mistake it will be to continue the combo classes next year. I have spent this year on and off campus helping with class needs as well as being a board member of our PTA, doing everything I can to not help only my child, but all of them. I feel my child's education, however, has suffered this year, not because of his teacher, but because of the lack of support she has received as a first-year teacher in our school district, taking on two grades that she had never taught before. She has been doing the best she could with what she was given, but I can tell you firsthand, these kids are learning the bare minimum. I have been in class at least one day each week since this switch happened, and the majority of the kids that are in there should not be. The children who need more help or attention are unable to get it. And on the flip side of that, the children who could be challenged and should be challenged aren't able to be. They are learning what they need to know for next year, and that is it. I think most of us can agree that this year's current second-grade class is still one of the grades most affected by COVID and the shutdown. They had virtual kindergarten and are still trying to catch up on so many levels three years later. They need a teacher who can give them the dedicated attention they require, and someone who is trying to teach two grades with no help is not able to provide that. The purpose of the combo class was to help decrease the class sizes, but even by removing three kids from each class, the remaining teachers are still overwhelmed and overworked. 28-plus students is still too many. We are now making arrangements for the TK change, which means hiring or reassigning staff from different grades. But what is being done for your existing students? How are they going to learn and grow to the best of their ability when it's hard to even walk between desks because their classes are so crowded? Our class sizes are not going to decrease, so we need a plan to accommodate these children, and combo classes isn't it? Smaller class sizes need to be planned for by adding more teachers, and the only way we can do that is with additional funding. Myself and everyone I've spoken to are so excited for Mr. Norton to come back as our principal next year, but we want to know what your plan is to do to set him up to help our school succeed. We would love to see our rating go back up from the six that it currently is. We have a group of amazing teachers that are doing the best they can, but without your help, their best isn't enough. Buchanan needs the funding to provide the education that our children deserve instead of letting our children's education continue to suffer. Thank you.
Shannon. And after Shannon will be Claire Bolaski. Welcome.
Good evening, board. My name is Shannon Saliba, and I've come to speak to you in continuation of my last speech given in October of last year. I'm a mother of two children at Buchanan Elementary, Emily, who's about to finish second, and Oliver, who's in first. When I was here last time, I came to discuss our full class sizes and my concern of all kids for Buchanan. I spent the last year in both of my kids' classrooms. While my son's classroom is now at a 24-to-1 ratio, my daughter's classroom is still at a 28-to-1. After spending time in both of the kids' classrooms, I have come to express that we have to find a way to continue to reduce the class sizes. In my daughter's larger class, I have seen firsthand that average students will probably get what they need from this class, but the higher-needs students are not getting the one-on-one that they need with the teachers to be able to excel, and the higher-achieving students are sitting around and not being challenged to their full potential. While I was working to set up the PTA fair in April, I had the pleasure of speaking with you, and we discussed about how Marietta School District should be the ones to set the bar, as we are a California distinguished school district. However, when I see 28-to-1 ratios in second-grade class, a combo class that many parents are not happy with being extended into the next year, fourth and fifth-grade classes that have 32 to 34 children in them, and parents who volunteer and have to go sit on the floor outside because they cannot fit into the class that they are in, I ask, are we really setting any bars here? Our great school rating has fallen to a 6 out of a 10. I see the most amazing teachers at our school trying to give it their all, but the district has to give them more funding so they can obtain smaller class sizes. I'm taking over as the PTA president for our school because I love the kids at our school, and I'm very passionate about the staff. But when I see money being put into extending the pre-K program for, and I am all for this, I have to wonder why the pre-K program is getting money while we're telling the rest of the students that are there that they just need to make do with what you have. We have to do better at Buchanan. We need it for lower class sizes. I hope the board will give thought to what the school needs in the future in reducing the class sizes. I am willing to sacrifice my personal money, my personal time, but what is the board willing to do to help us also?
Good, you're here.
Again, I'm Claire Bolaski. I'm at the high school. I'm a resource teacher. I wanted to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to appreciate a member of this district. But before I do that, I'd like to say thank you in advance for the pay increase. So thank you if you guys do vote for that. I want to tell you now. And I also want you to think about, I'm lost because I've been sitting so long. The cost, when we think about the equity, the cost between the high schools, the cost between the high schools who employ a large number of staff in Staff Appreciation Week. Maybe the district could put some funds aside so that every staff member could receive a free lunch. You'll hear about that down the line, the difference in what happened at the different high schools. So also, I want to take a quick moment to give a shout out for my assistant, Amy Davis, who's a major reason why I run such an effective program and my kids are successful. I'm hoping at the high school, all the aides will receive a revision to their classification. So those that are in the algebra class will receive the pay that they deserve for what they have to do and help my students. Finally, I want to thank the staff member I've known for almost 20 years, and she is one of my seven people who changed my life. I don't know if she knows that, but she started in our district as a vice principal. Lee Lockwood, please remember once that you were an allocator, and you will always remain an allocator. Thank you.
Now we'll have employee organization reports. Kimberly Chevlin, President MEA. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Andrus, and guests. May is Asian American Pacific Islander and Native Hawaiian Heritage Month. It is important we include these cultures and heritages in our classrooms because representation matters to our children. And I'm going to add right here that that is why MEA continues to have an Equity and Human Rights Committee. We also, this month, are celebrating Teacher-School Nurse Appreciation in the month of May. While Teacher Appreciation Week is a wonderful opportunity to express gratitude towards educators, it is important to realize that a single week dedicated to appreciation is not enough to truly acknowledge the immense contributions of teachers and school nurses. Teaching is a demanding profession and nursing that requires ongoing commitment, continuous professional development, and emotional investment. Teachers go above and beyond their duties, working tirelessly to create engaging lessons, provide individualized support, and nurture the social and emotional well-being of their students. They often spend countless hours outside of school grading assignments, preparing materials, and attending to their administrative tasks. Teacher appreciation should be an ongoing effort with consistent recognition and support throughout the year. This could include providing resources for professional development, improving working conditions, and valuing their expertise and input in educational policies. By recognizing their year-round efforts of teachers and school nurses, we can truly demonstrate our appreciation for their dedication and hard work. On May 2nd, we celebrated Dorothy McElhenney Middle School's Teacher of the Year, teacher Heather Hanlon, as she was awarded the 2023 Riverside County Teacher of the Year. I've had the pleasure of observing in her classroom, and she truly is an amazing teacher. On Friday, May 5th, E. Hill Curran's elementary school teacher, Sherry Grudel, was celebrated for being chosen by the Walt Disney Company as one of the 100 most inspiring teachers. Teachers from across the nation were chosen because of their extraordinary creativity and imagination. On May 1st, we celebrated the retirement of over, we celebrated the retirement of over 70 MBUSD educators and staff. We wish them well wherever their travels take them. That includes Lee. And I'd like to say Happy Mother's Day to those celebrating this weekend. We are nearing the finish line for this school year. Thank you.
Now we'll have board member reports. Mrs. Young.
Hey, I get to go first. Well, four of us went to the federal advocacy trip to Washington, DC, and called coast-to-coast. And the way that started is we were all polled on what we thought the most important issues were connected to the federal end of education. And when we got there, we spent an entire day being trained by experts on these issues. At the end of the day, we were organized by Assembly District. Our group was grouped with both Representative Isis District and Ken Calvert's. I'm thinking part of Marietta might be in Calvert's district, and they set us up with meetings with either, people met with either the representatives themselves or possibly with their aides. In our case, we did meet with both Representative Calvert's aide and Isis aide. So they decided who was going to talk about which topic. I was asked to talk about labor shortages in education and also the social security issue which does contribute to our labor shortages. Because people, there are a lot of people that would become Austin teachers who are working in other professions, but they can't really afford it because if they work, you know, if they're under the STIRS system, they will drastically cut their social security, and they can never catch up on STIRS. So it is an issue contributing to this, and you know, I talked about what California is doing to alleviate the shortages and ask, you know, what, you know, the federal government could do, the social security issue. Actually, it is, they are working on it, so I think there's a good chance of passing it, so people aren't getting punished for switching careers. And I won't delve into the other topics because maybe others want to, but we talked about special education, cybersecurity, nutrition. And I just thought it was really a worthwhile trip. You know, we learned to advocate, and I think that's part of our job is to advocate for public education along with the school district. And yeah, I learned a lot from that. I also, this was already mentioned, I did get to go to the celebrating educators luncheon at the Riverside Convention Center. There were several people from this district nominated, and I'm going to read the names. So we had Anne Marie Lopez, Nadia Zian, Robert Lurkins, Sean McCarthy, Denora Mendoza Montoya, Craig Frame, Faith Munchnick. And of course, I especially want to congratulate Heather Hanlon from Dorothy McElhenney Middle School. They made a really great video, they made really great videos on all the people that won, and her video actually brought tears to my eyes. So now I want to go back to middle school and take her class. So I'm going to go back when the school year starts up again. But yeah, I think there's a way you can see the video, so I highly recommend that. I was also invited to the CTE Engineering Field Trip by the Vista Marietta Teachers that happened last Wednesday. I really appreciated the experience. First, the group went to the Air and Space Museum. We got there a little late because our bus had a tire issue, but you know, we still had a decent amount of time there. After that, there was the Senior Design Day at San Diego State. It was huge, it was a huge hall. It was mostly senior engineering students from San Diego State. But there were also groups from UCSD with all different types of engineering product, projects. And one thing that really impressed me, and this didn't only happen with me, but I know some of the others in our groups. We got compliments from the students there on the intelligent questions the Marietta students were asking. And I thought that was really the ultimate compliment. But anyway, yeah, so yeah, I'll stop with that.
Thank you. Mrs. Vandergriff.
Thank you. Okay, so coming up on the end of the year here, I would like to highlight one of the events I attended that illustrated how rewarding it is to be committed to the happiness and well-being of another person. The event was the Vista Marietta Peer Mentoring Celebration. And as I made my way around to the various displays, students related the growth and the friendship they experienced. Even though one student was designated as mentor, I heard student after student relate how much they valued and enjoyed the friendship that developed in the course of the year, whether it was in the context of a ceramics class, a Spanish class, a leadership class, or a math class. This is such an important life lesson that I hope the seniors will take with them as they venture into the wider world. I hope they're able to keep sight of how important and rewarding personal relationships are. The give and take, the patience, the struggle involved, and ultimately the joy, and to fight the ever-raging battle of technological immersion. We have an epidemic of technology addiction today. And while we continually hear warnings of its devastating effects on youth particularly, we seem paralyzed even in light of the terrifying fallout. The California School Boards Association March 2023 Newsletter reports that suicide is the third-leading cause of death for youth ages 15 to 19. And one in four adolescents ages 12 to 17 report having recently experienced a substance use disorder or a major depressive episode. The topic of cell phones has come up repeatedly here in this district. And we, as a district and as a board, have not done anything yet despite the link of technology addiction to the immense suffering we see in our society. So what is technology addiction? Technology addiction is defined as frequent and obsessive behavior despite negative consequences from dependency on technology. It can significantly impact students' lives. Depending on its severity, technology addiction can be socially devastating. People who are addicted to technology might suffer withdrawal symptoms ranging from feelings of annoyance to feelings of extreme anxiety and depression. So what makes technology addictive? Technology often fulfills our natural human needs for stimulation, interaction, and changes in environment with great efficiency. When teenagers experience difficult phases in their lives from social rejection to the stress of exams, technology can become a quick and easy way to fulfill basic needs and as such can become addictive. Technology impacts the pleasure systems of the brain in ways similar to substances and provides some of the same rewards that alcohol and other drugs might. It can be a boredom buster, a social lubricant, and an escape from reality. Video and computer games, smartphones and tablets, social media, and the internet provide a variety of access points that can promote different sources of dependence and negative consequences for youth. Technology addiction can give students a false sense of relational security as they communicate with unseen individuals around the world. The speed with which technology moves makes everything available within seconds, encouraging an unhealthy desire for instant gratification that can promote irritability and anxiety throughout daily life. Maybe that is a reference to some of the things we're seeing in the classroom. Even as healthy teens are challenged by increasing life responsibilities, hormonal changes, and the stress of new social and academic worlds like dating and applying to colleges, these life transitions become even harder for those absorbed in technology. Within a technology-addicted individual, the mind becomes increasingly unable to distinguish between the lived and the alternate realities that produce instant stimulation, pleasure, and reward. As such, the extreme use of technology can disrupt normal patterns of mood and socialization in teens. Dependency upon social media, gaming, or other platforms to function can become the new and unhealthy normal. Researchers have found that people who abuse technology may develop similar brain chemistry to those who abuse substances. Another concern is that those who are addicted to technology are actually more likely to abuse substances than their peers with healthy relationships to tech, providing the insight that technology addiction may be a risk factor for substance abuse. Teens who hypertext or send more than 120 messages per school day are 40% more likely to have tried cigarettes, two times more likely to have tried alcohol, 43% more likely to be binge drinkers, 41% more likely to have used illegal drugs, and 55% more likely to have been in a physical fight. On top of that, the same research noted that young adults who spent more than three hours per school day on social networking sites were at higher risk for depression, suicide, and substance abuse. Thus, if we prevent technology addiction, we may prevent many other risks as well. And that information comes from the Betty Ford Hazelton, Hazelton Center. So I believe we have a moral imperative to address this. And a great way to start would be to take a serious look at the cell phones on campus. And so I'm looking forward to having this on the agenda as soon as possible. And then one, one last thing, I just want to pass this to my fellow board members as a concern about how we don't want the community's process to be subverted when they're asked for input. Anyway, thank you. Pass it back to me when you're done, please.
Thank you. Mrs. Lynn.
All right. Well, welcome, everybody. It's great to see you all here and to hear everything that you have to say. We do appreciate it. Big thing that happened this week or this past month was that we did go to the Coast to Coast Conference out in Washington DC. And I'll tell you, it was, it was awesome. It was morning till night, back-to-back meetings that we attended to get prepared so that we understood what we were talking about, so that we understood the issues. They've already been listed out, so I won't do that. And we had tons of reading that we had to do ahead of time, which I was very happy to do so that we were best prepared to participate and contribute and to be constructive, productive members of the conference. We had one single morning free, so we did get to run up and down the mall to see the Lincoln Memorial and the Washington Monument, which was really neat. I'd never seen any of that in person before and it's even better than it is in movies. I would encourage anyone who hasn't done it to do it. I'm seeing a lot of nodding here. Probably the highlight for me was attending a reception in the Capitol Building. To say I was honored to be walking the hallways where our country was built and founded as the same people who built it. It gave me goosebumps and I was so honored to be there. It's been, it was constructed in 1793. And our American government has worked to ensure that all of us are equal and we have the right and the freedom to pursue happiness according to our own personal beliefs. It was deeply moving and I'm so glad I got the opportunity to be there. And it really made me proud to be American to be in that building. So it was a great opportunity. Immediately following that, I came home from the airport and drove straight back up to Burbank because I know I've talked to you guys before about I help coordinate Army educator tours with our district. And we send administrators and teachers and counselors on these tours to Army forts. That is run by the Army, it's paid for by the Army, and they're really fun. And this time I got to go on one and I got to ride in a Blackhawk helicopter up to Fort Irwin. It, it was so awesome. I got all tangled up in the headphones and stuff. They had to help me. But, but it was fun. And one of the reasons why I have been a proponent of this is because we do have three JROTCs, Marine, Air Force, and Navy, but we don't have Army here because we don't have that fourth high school. And so that relationship has been really important to me. And this helps us, what, what this does for our administrators and teachers that go there, it really opens up the doors that, for us, shows us the doors that are open for students and the opportunities that Army has to offer our young people from college to technical training, from officer to enlisted positions. There really are no limits. So if anybody wants to talk to me about that, it was a great trip and I've had some experience at other places as well. I also attended the, our COE Celebrating Educators. We did have 10 finalists from MVUSD who were recognized. And of course, Mrs. Hanlon, a couple of people have already talked about her. One of the things that she talked about, and one of the reasons why she was recognized was for her efforts in relationship building through an inclusive culture in her classroom. She has students that are reluctant dancers. She has students that have extraordinary needs. But she includes them all in a safe space to come together in her classroom to express themselves creatively through dance. So bravo, Mrs. Hanlon. So proud of you about that. I too was invited to chaperone with the Vista CTE Engineering Pathway students on their SDSU field trip. And I heard the same comments from, not only from staff members, but from the senior students there who were doing, this is our culminating project for years worth, who were saying, oh, you're from Vista? Those kids really know what they're talking about. They ask such intelligent questions. So it's made me so proud of our students to hear that, especially in engineering, because I spent most of the day not really understanding anything that was going on. And an absolute shout out to our transportation. We did have a flat tire and they got a bus out to us lickety-split. But what that allowed me to do actually was to have great conversations with our CTE teachers. These are boots-on-the-ground people and the way, what they see is the pathway forward for us with CT. And it was illuminating and they've got some great ideas. I got to talk with Joe Raymer, Andy Rucker, and Cameron Larkin about that and just got some great insight. Immediately following that, I went to the APAC rites of passage and that's their promotion ceremony for fifth and eighth graders and recognizing their graduates. And once again, I'm just blown away by our students and their accomplishments. There were students who are college-bound with four-year full rides all the way to a student who has developed his own line of clothing and is starting his own business in that immediately following graduation this year. It's just awesome meeting these accomplished students. I too attended the Bronco Buddies exhibit at Vista. These, these are students who, two types of students, students. One are peer leadership students and they are trained and asked to work with a sped student. And they go to classes with them. They go to regular classes. These are not sped classes. And they work together and it's just been awesome. And listening to these students, both the sped students and the Gen Ed Peer Leader students, listening to what they have learned about themselves and about each other. It was, it was a wonderful experience and I would really encourage anyone, if you have a chance to go to one of our inclusion activities, our unified sports, please do. We are doing great work. And these students are articulate, they're accomplished, and they're leaving our high schools with a full skill set of understanding collaborative working relationships, leadership, learning from everyone around them, and most importantly, empathy for others. It was really heartening. I did get to go to the CTE and JROTC Awards Night, which again, so awesome to see those kids completing their pathways. Typically, it's a three-year, a couple or four years. I was interested to hear from Richard Slocum, who was our teacher of automotive technology. That's one of our oldest CTE pathways. And he mentioned that a lot of his students actually don't do the third-year completer because they are hired straight out of having two years in his classroom. And they have so many certifications and licensing from nationally recognized, like companies like Snap-on and stuff. They're getting hired straight out under us. So it's awesome. Let's see. I was very happy because I was paired with John Lovell. He's one of our city council members that night at the CTE Awards. And he also serves as a business development director at Loma Linda and now he's part of our CTE Pathways team, planning team. We always have a member from the community and he, we just, we just voted him in at our last meeting. And he let me know that the KTM Motocross, you know, the building out there on Winchester that I told you about last week, last meeting, Reagan Hyten, I think that's how you say her name, who attends Anna Lope Hills in the, just last weekend in the Junior Supercross in Denver, placed first, the first girl to ever do that. So awesome, right? Way to represent Marietta. Finally, I will be meeting with Kate Sanchez next week, advocating again for public education, K through 12 through CSBA. And I just want to say, every single student I meet and every parent I meet, and I, you know, I go to a lot of events and all of our staff members that I meet, these are the people, this is my paycheck doing that. These people inspire me. They are my heroes. And they remind me to focus on what really matters and that's supporting student learning and achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pardue.
I also happen to attend the CSBA DC Advocacy Trip. And what I was struck by was how many young people actually are involved in the process. So all the aides that we saw when we visited are representatives of pretty young people, pretty knowledgeable. And I thought that was really impressive. When I went to go to Nancy Pelosi, not Nancy Pelosi, sorry, no. Dianne Feinstein's office, because I wanted to see the Senate floor again in awe of just being at the Capitol and getting to, you know, taking the history. I was greeted by a young college student who would fill out the pass and do all this stuff. And so I took a break and went down and had lunch in their little lunch break area. And again, it's just amazing. And I went back and told my students, because for those who don't know, I'm also a teacher, and, and, and talked to them about how important it is to get engaged, to get involved sooner so that you can participate in some of these things. And having spoken with Kate Sanchez before and hearing from her representative about how she needs, oh shoot, now I'm drawing a blank on what that's called when they're the aides in the office and they're helping answering phone calls and interns, appreciate that. Looking for interns and trying to find students. And I think it would be a good way for our students here at MVUSD to link up with our representatives and get involved that they know that that opportunity exists. I thought that was really neat. I was also on that trip really excited. I got invited by Congressman Jay Obernolte to go to his house and hang out and listen to what was being said. And my big question was kind of why are we only talking to aides? Why is education not like a higher priority, especially with Republicans, right? I didn't understand that. I know Nancy Pelosi and Mark Takano showed up. They were focused on more social issues, mostly trans issues, it sounded like, but I missed them, so I don't know for sure. I guess our other two members would be able to tell us what they had to say about that. But the biggest issue, and just like we're talking about teacher pay and, you know, how Parish Union High School District gets paid one way versus how we get paid. You know, a lot of that does have to do with, you know, people don't like talking about CRT, but that's a big part of it, right? Under, underperforming students in communities and they get more money, they get more funding. And for us, we have to come up with more creative ways to keep our, our teachers paid and happy and wanting to be engaged. We have less resources. We have to be, we have to be more creative. It just is what it is. In this case, the congressman's expressing the fact that we, well, I already know this as an economics teacher, we don't have enough money. We're always deficit spending. We don't have enough money to fund everything. And right now, when they're trying to, to cut spending, there's different priorities. And that's kind of what we were up against there. I also had the chance to talk, and this is a little bit before our, our meeting over textbooks, about our, our pathways for different students, which was just brought up by the two science teachers. Kelly Creo, Michelle Coté came up to, to address. We got a letter from numerous teachers discussing this issue. We, I know that's a big, big issue with me. I've said this a number of times. I think that students need to be able to choose a path. There should be freedom. There should be some choice in terms of what they do. I don't think everyone should be funneled through biology, chemistry, and physics. I think is a huge mistake. And even when we heard from our elementary school teachers from Buchanan, and I'm sorry for the name. I was writing, by the way, I write down a lot of notes because I've, thank you. But one of the issues was like a big class, we have lots of kids with lots of different needs. We have some kids that need a little bit more attention. We have some kids that aren't quite being challenged because we're, we're not necessarily meeting everybody's needs and how we're addressing the students. And this gets down to the nuts and bolts of education and, and everybody kind of agrees with that. We want our students to be as successful as possible, have the skills necessary to be successful in the, in the real world. And I would say that's more important in high school. I shared with Dr. Andrus how I came across my, and I think I said that in the last meeting, my 1984. I think there was a lot of, there was a ton of different options for us. And to think that we've advanced so far that we've actually kind of, I think we've lost something. And I think we should just be able to take some time and get this on the agenda, reevaluate that. And with that being said, to discuss the textbook adoption And with that being said, to discuss the textbook adoption, which was a big concern, I always just, I didn't like coming up here and then the board never really responded my concerns. I want to respond to some of those. The textbook adoption and, and no one's banning a book. I didn't really like how people put that. Um, the issue was, are we responding to the community? And if the community has a concern, then we have a, a duty to look at it a little closer and ask a few more questions. And that's all we're doing. So I, I don't like this jump and rush to judgment about what we're trying to do. As a history teacher and someone, as we talked about how long it's been since, I know they need these resources. And I did speak to a couple of people on this issue on uh, since the last meeting. And um, the reality is the AP test is what it is. So we need resources that are going to help the kids be successful in the AP test. And whether we like what the curriculum's in there or not, you know, that doesn't really matter too much. I, I do understand there's bias, but I think it's really important, as someone pointed out, I, I speak about broken trust. We serve a community. And we have to have the, we have to listen to what the community is concerned about. That's our job. That's what the board's job is. And uh, furthermore, uh, which is really always disheartening for a social studies teacher. Lots to say on this. Um, you know, our government, it's, it's for the people, by the people. Okay, that means that the people are our boss. And they decide what happens with government and government policy. That's why we have elections. So in terms of being qualified to be here, we represent the parents and the constituents. Everyone's qualified, any one of the parents. I was so proud of the people who really aren't, because there's some people are politically motivated. They come here all the time and they, they say the same thing over and over again. But when someone has the courage to come up here and speak their mind as a parent, you need to be able to hear what they, those people are saying, because that really matters. Because that does take a lot of courage to come up here and publicly speak. We have teachers that are afraid to come up here and publicly speak. And so I think we should be respectful of them and make sure we hear what they have to say, regardless of what their degrees are. And that the teachers have great degrees and they have a lot of expertise, but they, we still have to be responsive to our stakeholders, which is the community, Marietta. And, and that's what we're trying to do as a board. And every single citizen in this city is qualified to sit on this board. And to attack one of our board members is completely unacceptable as far as I'm concerned. It's disrespectful to the 60% of Marietta, because Ms. Van De Grift had a huge margin. And that is disrespectful to those constituents, to, to denigrate her like that. And I think we should have more civility, especially if you're an educator, you need to understand the, what the positions are, what the roles are. In terms of schools, there's some things that are our responsibility and there's some that are Dr. Andres's responsibility. When it comes to some of the programs that you're concerned about, that's going to fall on Dr. Andres. In terms of policy, that's us. Uh, I do know that the teachers need, need stuff. You need to know that. This is a forum for us to discuss the issues that are concerning the community and be respectful of everybody and their opinions. Uh, so I appreciate everybody and uh, thank you so much for giving me that. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, here's the fun part. You'll love this. This is the results of the 2022-23 second interim financial report.
Oh, okay.
The good news is, the good news is that we have uh, passed well. Uh, everything and uh, the Riverside County Board of Education uh, folks say that our department uh, is doing a great job. And that's exciting to hear. Now, for fun, I'll tell you a little bit about some other things. Um, I had a chance to see Annie the musical over at Chevala. And that's an interesting thing. This was for me, an interesting couple of three weeks. In the past, middle school programs and presentations have been sort of, you go there and you kind of grit your teeth and pray that everything do all right. This time, I thought I was in a high school. I was just astonished. What happened with Annie and the presence, stage presence that those kids had. And this is singing, a lot of singing. And uh, it's one thing to get up and stage to speak. I've done that. They've been in plays and so forth. But when you have to get up and sing, a little bit different. And uh, they just carried it all the way through. It was very exciting. Then I got to go to the Vista Art Show, which was interesting to see uh, the kinds of things, and I'm an artist, to see the kind of things that the kids, subject matter and so forth were doing. And there's some terrific things that I photographed and going to put up a few of, a few of them in the hallway and replace some of the other pictures, because we've got some really good ones. Uh, then I got to go see Willie. That's Willy Wonka. It, it was astonishing when I walked in. First of all, the way the multipurpose room was set up gave me some ideas about what we can do with future MPRs inexpensively to create more of a theater atmosphere and better sound. Uh, they had curtains, 10 foot high curtains on rollers. And I thought, boy, they've got the bucks. How do they do that? Well, the church was very kind and let them use those. And so they had lined the hallway, uh, the hall, I'm sorry, with these big curtains. And it made such a difference in sound. And also it blocked the fact that this is an MPR. You were in a different kind of atmosphere. The sound system had been upgraded somewhat. Uh, the lighting system had been upgraded somewhat, but the show was astonishing because they had an orchestra. They had an orchestra. They had a cello and a, a, well, I won't go into the instruments, but, but it was really something I thought, oh boy, this is going to be, ooh, watch out. It was incredible. When that uh, Mr. Merlin picked up the baton and started, I was astonished. And very, very thrilled that there was such a cohesive sound coming from that orchestra. And they followed all the way through. They stayed up with the beat. They uh, queued the uh, actors and actresses. It was a wonderful performance. Uh, there was a girl who played the part of Willy Wonka. And she was perfect. Couldn't have picked a better actor to do it. She was a little reticent. Played a little bit shy. Uh, a little bit withdrawn and, and all the other kids, of course, they're obnoxious beyond the pale. But she was terrific. And Willie himself, singing that he did was, was superb. It was just a, a fun time. Had a chance to spend some time with a, an outside consultant on a Dr. Andres's uh, evaluation. He passed.
That's not public information.
Yes, no, that's not public. I, I'll, I'll tell you what really happened later. We're still studying the, the books and we'll have a meeting on the 18th about that. And, and your comment was quite correct. Um, Mr. Pardue, we're not interested in banning books. We're interested in getting the best book that is the most balanced that we possibly can. Now balanced means something to everybody in here, maybe a little bit different, but we're trying our darndest to get one that, that will work. So we're studying that. And um, I hope that you get to attend some of these performances next year. There's one tonight that's happening at Thompson. Uh, James and the Giant Peach, I think it is. That is equally supposed to be very good. I've, I've enlisted my wife to go and give me a full report. She didn't back out at all. She thought that was great. All right. Thank you all for your comments.
Mr. Difley.
By the way, audience, thank you for your comments. I was, I was pleased to hear some things that I had not heard before and I hope that we can follow up on them. Uh, we should, yes sir.
Can I just add something about the curtains you were talking about?
Absolutely.
Um, we as, because our buildings are public buildings built with public dollars, community groups can um, I won't use the word rent. They can use our um, buildings, our facilities for a nominal fee, just what it costs to bring the um, custodial crew in or something that night afterwards or to set up. And so many of our buildings are used by churches for church services if they don't have a building. And so I'm so sorry, I don't know which church this was, but they have services in McIlhany. And they loaned us those use of those buffering curtains for that. And it just illustrates our terrific relationship with our
Over again every month. Uh, do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar items F1 through F13 is presented?
So moved. Oh, second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None. Uh, passes five to nothing. Let's go on to G1, which is approval of an agreement with Clifford Moss LLC for professional services. Dr. And, Andres, could you enlighten us?
Sure. Just briefly, um, having met with board members and in general discussion with the board at our retreat, there was discussion about exploring the potential of a future bond. This is the, this is just uh, an item to approve a contract for a feasibility study. So just to be clear, this is not us going out for a bond. We need to study the feasibility of, of the likelihood it's passing, the size of the bond and projects that'd be interested in the community. So this is part of a, a process to solicit that information.
And, and why is that? Is our current bond expiring?
There is only a certain remaining amount of funds in Measure BB and those were dedicated for certain projects, primarily technology. And that's coming to an end of its life. Um, and we, we've discovered and we recognize we have other facility needs um, in the district. Um, Marietta Valley High School is 35 years old-ish and there's lots of needs there. If you know someone who teaches science in that building, it's, it's of particular interest to me. Um, in talking with the principal, there's also needs around where they serve students' food and where they eat, kind of some of those challenges. Along with the fact that we've got um, a couple of gymnasiums, the middle school don't have heating and air conditioning and uh, in the gyms, because the way they're constructed. And then furthermore, there's other needs uh, around like Marietta Canyon Academy is a school of portable buildings. There's not any, um, it's not, it's, it's been functional. It's greatly improved, but there, there's just ongoing needs in the district. So we just need to explore what that is and be prepared. This is not a, and this is not a contract to move forward in any way. This is simply to study.
Thank you for that. Is that a discussion item? Pardon me?
So, so the process would be a, a motion and then comments.
Um, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments?
I think what we, uh, it was brought up in public comments, actually. Uh, one of the, one of the challenges is as a, as a school district, we need to be responsible to the community. If we want support, and, and this is especially hard because of what we mentioned, with the teachers concerned about their pay and in comparison to districts near us. And there's a perception that we have so much money given to us, that we have all this money and the state is going to, you know, and how are we managing this money? And just like we're kind of confused about everyone's role uh, and, and in, in government, in local government. Um, the public is going to be very confused hearing the state giving away money for ridiculous things and wondering, hey, you have all this money and you're going to start handing it out here and there and there. But then you're going to ask me for more money to take care of the schools that the state should be taking care of. So I think we need to be very careful if we're asking for money from our constituents. One, how they're treated when they come in here and say they have a concern. That's kind of important. Um, the other one is paying attention to the larger debates in the state of California where they are throwing money around like they don't know what to do with it. And I would highly, especially the people who are politically active on both sides of the aisle, talk to your people and let them know they need to be responsible with that money because you can't keep asking the taxpayers of Marietta for bond measure, bond measure, bond measure, when the state of California has the funds to fully fund us, to pay all of our teachers well, to give us enough so we could lower class sizes, to do all of these things. But they're the ones holding the money from us. Right? And so the, the, I'm just going to say our constituents are going to be frustrated. This is going to be a very difficult poll in this climate unless as a board and as a community, we get together and start thinking clearly about what we're asking for and what the, what resources the state has. And if they're being responsible with their, with their resources. Um, so I just, I wanted to say that out loud to get off my chest because it is a very frustrating uh, issue as we sit in different meetings, talking about funding and all the things we want to do. We'd love to help the teachers. We'd love to have all this stuff. But it, the state really does hamper what we can do with the money in this pool and that pool and the next. Uh, so I had to say that.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. G2, approval of personnel report. Call for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passed five to zero. G3, this is the public disclosure of a tentative agreement with the California School Employees Association and its Marietta Valley Chapter 223 for the 2023-24 school year. It's an information item. Then we move on to G4, which is approval of the tentative agreement with the California School Employees Association and its Marietta Chapter 223. I call for a motion and a second.
So moved. Okay, second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? I'll come out. I'll say hooray. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five to zero. G5, approval of, approval of classified employee salary schedules effective July 1st, 2023. Call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none.
I believe, I believe this one requires a roll call though.
Nope. Okay, we will do it. You're right. Mrs. Lund?
Aye.
Mr. Pardue?
Aye.
Mrs. Van De Grift?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Difley, I, motion carries five to zero. G2, a, G2, sound like it's a spy story. G6, a public disclosure of tentative agreement with the Marietta Educators Association for the 2023-24 school year. An information item. We go to G7, which is approval of the tentative agreement with the Marietta Educators Association, which calls for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G8, approval of certificated employee salary schedules effective July 1st, 2023. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? I think it's exciting that we're, this is up for a vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G9, approval of certificated and classified management slash confidential employee salary schedules effective July 1st, 2023. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G10, approval of 7% salary increase for all senior management employees effective July 1st, 2023. Calls for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G11, approval of compensation increase for the Board of Education. Calls for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Another five bucks won't hurt, right? Okay, hearing none?
Yes.
Yes. Call for a vote. Call for a vote. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. G12, approval of the revised 2023, twenty, apologies. Approval of the revised 2022/23 certificated and classified staffing plans. This calls for a motion and second.
So moved. I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. G13, approval of a declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the 2023/24 school year. This is a call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G14, approval of proposed new social science curriculum for grades A through five. Call for a motion and second.
So moved. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any comments?
Do you have a comment?
Okay. Since social studies seems to be on our our radar this year, and everyone's paying attention to it. One of the comments that I had had earlier was this idea of the teacher training and because the teacher in the classroom is ultimately who's going to determine how this material is presented, because sometimes they pay attention to the book, sometimes they don't. If there, if, if we could have either something put on the agenda or some kind of study session with this, because this is approval, is there another step in this process?
No, this is the one for the elementary school for just the purchase of those materials that were on display.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I, I was, and the other part to this too is there seem to be a lot of people who are interested in the curriculum just generally. And I know that there's apparent groups for a lot of, you know, other interests. It would be worth looking into as a board at some point, have a discussion maybe with staff of having a parent group that's just, if they have concerns or they can talk and meet as just a parent group so that they can discuss some of the issues or concerns.
Right. So without going too far down a rabbit hole on that one, let me address two of those things. I actually meant to ask Faith a question about implementation training on that, if you could address that. Secondly, I think that, that what you're referring to really is the, the board policy on curriculum, curriculum adoptions. And that's, that deserves a revisit because that also doesn't have an associated administrative regulation. And there's a, there's a, I'm sending some information to the board tomorrow on that particular topic specifically about the future or potential adjustments in policy about how we include more specifically with better or more specific language around that. Our policy is rather broad, and it's not as scripted as I think I'm hearing that there may be interest. So that's, and that becomes the lane of the board is policy.
I would really like to support that because that's something I've been talking about for years, is having more community stakeholder involvement prior to the recommendation.
Yeah. So that becomes
And that's a policy change.
Right. That becomes a policy. Correct. That becomes a policy adjustment, maybe the writing or development of an AR with more scripted or more specificity around adoption process, because we do not currently have one. So I'd be able to address that in the future options.
All right.
Specifically around the training, Faith, could you address that?
Yeah, whenever we do an adoption, there follows some model of training. Usually it's choices for teachers. A lot want to do it in the summer, you know, so we usually give an option to do it in the summer. And then in the fall, based on what works for them and either pay extra duty or sub out for them. A lot of the times that training is specifically, and it's through the curriculum. They provide trainers. You've probably been through some yourself, where they share how to use the curriculum, what are the resources that come with it. I think what you're referring to, though, is a little more nuanced, that whole concept of, you know, how do we present topics so that they're presented in a way that's very neutral. And I think that's something that we can, we can go there. I guarantee you that this is something on our teacher's mind anyway. I mean, I think that a lot of them are concerned to make sure that they are doing that because they know the implications for not. So, but I think it's something that we can
Here, feeling the, the sense that there's two camps that are really concerned about this. And then just being able to make them aware, maybe through some process, PLC or otherwise, about, you know, hey, we need to be aware of this. This is a concern the community has as a teacher in the classroom. I don't know. I'm sure there's a, a process by which you guys could make that happen because I think that'd be important.
And we can let you know when we do and how that goes. I do think there is more awareness than you might think in terms of just people, you, you know, understand, but I think they're would be eager for some direction on that as well, so we can definitely accomplish that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G15, student discipline stipulated expulsion case number 2022 2023-119. This calls for a motion and a second.
I move that the Board of Education of the Myrieta Valley Unified School District expel the student referenced in case number 2022-2023-119 for the violation of California Education Code 48900C for the remainder of the second semester of the 2022-2023 school year and first semester of the 2023-2024 school year.
Do I have a second?
I second that the Board of Education of the Myrieta Valley Unified School District expels student reference in case number 2022-2023-119 for the violation of California Education Code 48900C for the remainder of the second semester of the 2022-2023 school year and the first semester of the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G16, second reading and adoption of proposed new and proposed revisions to board policy and administrative regulations. This is in regard to bids, uniform and public construction costs, admission, et cetera, et cetera. I call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G17, approval of the appointment of members to the Citizens Oversight Committee for the Measure BB General Obligation Bond. Paul Parker and Angela Villanueva. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any comments?
I would like to thank Mr. Parker and Mrs. Villanueva for just dedicating their time to this. They meet several times a year and they, they're allocating money for really important things. So I'm very, very happy that they're part of that. Thank you for joining us.
I second that. Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G18, adoption of resolution number 22/23-19, a resolution to adopt revised standard questionnaire for pre-qualification of construction contractors pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 20111.6. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G19, approval to award a contract to Ben's Asphalt, Inc., in the amount of $392,995 for the Myrieta Valley Unified School District Asphalt Replacement Project, bid number 2023-03. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G20, approval to award a contract to Dahlke &amp; Sons Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,198,890 for the Alta Myrieta Lab Conversion Product, uh, Project, sorry, bid number 2023-08. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? I think that's exciting. A new lab conversion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G21, adoption of resolution number 22/23-20, authorizing the temporary transfer of funds between various district funds for fiscal year 2023/24. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G22, adoption of resolution number 22/23-21, authorizing the annual delegation of administrative authority to process routine budget revisions, adjustments, and transfers for fiscal year 2023/24. This calls for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. G23, approval of addition to certification of signatures form 3350T. Call for a motion and a second.
So moved. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five to zero. Let's see. Yeah. Jay, adjournment. I call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
During the Board of Education at 7:45. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Well done.
I know. I know.
That would have taken another hour.
Having that. It helps the stream land a whole classes.
Just in time.
Really? Can I make a copy of this?